Join us for the pledge of allegiance to the stormy year.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call the mole, we have our district attorney, Paul Pierce here, Supervisor Eagles here, Supervisor Banks has made personal arrangements going to be late, Supervisor Kleinger this year, Supervisor Dias here, Supervisor Flaherty will not be here today in person, she may call in, and our district manager, Chris Shoemaker is here. With that, if anybody has one of these with them, please turn it to silence and get their phones ringing. And I'm sure we have people who have signed up to speak.
Yes. We have four speaker cards that were filled out. And I'll start with Mr. James Brand, Hampton Park.
Good afternoon. Madam President, members of the board, thank you for your time this afternoon. Good afternoon, I'm James for you residing in Hampton Park. I provided you a document that has three pages. The first page is a proposed development order for Hampton Park's storm lakes. And I believe I sent that to each of the supervisors via email. There's been a minor change to what I handed you versus what I sent you. In the third paragraph, there's a clause, this says except invasive species which should be removed as soon as they are identified. So that was exactly from what I said.
I'm sorry, Jim, I can't, I'm not with you, where are you, please?
Okay, on the very first page that I handed you, paragraph number three.
This labeled three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, number three.
It's, there's a clause that was added to that versus what I sent you on email. And that clause says except invasive species which should be removed as soon as they are identified. And then the second page, I think you all have seen this, are key paragraphs in the Hampton Park homeowners association declaration. And that declaration has a key clause that says no owner or other person shall disturb, remove, alter, or in any way disrupt vegetation on the storm lakes. If they do, they're subject to a fine by the HLA. A copy of this declaration, the whole declaration, is provided to every resident owner prior to closing on their home with the title company. The title company requires a signed document stating that the declaration has been received, read, understood, and that the owner read a body mark. Finally, I provided you three pictures from the lake, and you all have seen this before, I presume, at your last meeting. The first picture is of a storm lake that has latorals all around it. The second picture is one where there's red lines around it, and that, those red lines indicate that those are that much area that would have to have latorals removed to comply with someone who only wanted the lake to have 25 percent latorals. And then the third picture is a picture of a lake bank that has had the latorals removed. Latorals, I think you all know, provide a very positive thing to prevent lake bank erosion, and they improve the quality of the lake water. The thing, the last thing I asked that's in the document I gave you is that you vote. And Mr. Shoemaker told me that he would prefer to put that request on the agenda for your next meeting. Any questions about what I've offered to you today? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Next speaker, Warren Davies, Stony Brook. Storage lot.
Good afternoon, my name is Warren Davies, I live in Stony Brook on Stone Valley Loop. Sometime in 2016, the board was discussing the need for administrative offices here for Gateway. In September of 2016, the board gave directions to the engineer to determine moving the existing RV lot somewhere else so that the administrative offices could expand in that direction. It's now, three years later, we have spent probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 to $100,000 in engineering fees, and we have nothing to show for it. We have things going to permitting, but we don't have any physical business. We have a lot over here, we have people waiting to get into those lots, we have administrative people sitting on top of each other trying to get things done, but it's not getting done. The memo from Tetra Tech advised that the only bid proposed for the storage lot since it was out was $882,579, which is like $335,000 more than what they projected when they first proposed these spots. Now that's for 80 spots. That's over $10,000 to $11,000 per lot, and that's just construction costs. And once those spots are given up, those people aren't going to give them up. It's not like going to the pool, where everybody can go to the pool. They don't get a whole bunch of people, they don't get a thousand people, but they can go. Once those lots are bought, and I think as they found with the 20 lots, people aren't going to give them up. Their waiting list was something like 80, 100 people, for waiting lists that were years. So once it's done, it's done. So the, the need for that is really for the convenience of roughly 80 people to park their boats and stuff closer. They're parking somewhere now, so they need to continue to park them somewhere else, and the board needs to drop this program, scrap it, and use that money for others, other things. I wonder how much, how many ponds or lakes can we do for a million dollars? And by the time this whole thing be said and done, we'll be at a million dollars, pretty close to it now with the engineering fees we've already paid. And that's just for the storage lot. Practically every meeting we come to, and even today, we'll hear some, about the costs in working on and fixing up the infrastructure of Gateway. And those don't come cheap. And when you listen to the Gateway service people talk about repair stuff, that they're talking pumps and generators and stuff that cost in the thousands and thousands of dollars. We don't have to, I should say Gateway does not have to do everything for everybody in this particular way. We need to maintain what we have in the best way we can. The, I think the only people that have made out in this whole process is our engineering company. As I say, we've paid probably $60,000 to $100,000, and we have nothing to show for it. And they're kind of the key people involved in that area. I see the, on the list there that the building has gone to permitting. I believe the RV lot has gone to permitting also. With the track record we've been having at Lee County permitting, I doubt if they'll pass. We've not had a really good success rate that I can see at, at that from the, from the, these particular topics. So as I say, I would like to see the board scrap the program, let people stay where they're at, and not have to. And, and these costs, one of the things on here, someone mentioned the last time we discussed this, there was no business plan. I'm not sure Gateway wants to get into the business of doing this, into a regular business. They, they do not include administrative costs or the time costs to, to monitor and to administer this program. It's a big program to administer. You've got 80 people, don't sound like many, but when you're trying to run them down for insurance and payments and that kind of stuff, it runs time for somebody to do that. And our staff is already overworked, but within this building. So with that, I would close and say I wish the board would, would scrap it, try to get some money, do something with the $60,000 to $100,000 we've already spent, and not spend another million dollars to put something up that we really don't need for all of Gateway. Thank you.
Next, Jesse Bitter. Templeton Lane, would like to address the soccer fields.
Yes, please. Hi, my name is Jesse Bitter, I've lived in Gateway for 10 years, and I'm a homeowner in Hampton Park. I came to, I don't have like something prepared because this just came up a couple of days ago, and there's actually a whole bunch of parents that feel the same way I do, but we've all just learned of this situation earlier this week. I was under the impression this summer the soccer fields were not going to be closed. As I said, I've lived here 10 years, there were many years that this, the soccer fields were not closed over the summer, and the spell didn't follow anything, and here we are, you know? And I know we've done it for a few years, and I can tell you how disappointed we were when we pulled our car out loaded full of balls and boys and everything that first summer. And I can only imagine being a new person who moved into Gateway and saw all the amenities, a mom with little ones or something to pull up and see, these gates are all shut and locked. It's very disappointing, and the kids are out of school, and I don't think it's fair. So I just put a few brief notes, because I just learned, a friend was up here the other day and was told that you guys are closing it on June 17th. So I came, and more parents will be here if they knew sooner. The, one thing I want to say is that I don't think it's, I mean, I know you need to do the maintenance, and I understand, I don't know if there's a different way, like aerate the fields more, seed them, move signs around saying stay up in these fields, you know, just like for sale type of signs saying please stay up in these. My three sons do come often, I've never seen it be a problem. There's usually in between maybe five to 20 people at the most, including a couple of parents that are using the playground, which also gets locked at the same time. I'm very much in support of the leagues that use the field, we do Gateway soccer, Gateway football, and elite soccer. So we participate in all of your leagues, and I think it's amazing to hear because they provide an extra asset to our community and for the children in our community, at the same time offsetting the cost of the field, which I know is an issue for the board, the cost of the fields. At the end of the day, the field is its own amenity, and I'll pay for them. Just like, I don't use the community pool, but I moved into Gateway, and I know that's an amenity, and I'll pay for it. If I get a bill for the community pool, I, I moved in here, I'll, I'll pay for it, you know? So I want those to remain open for my kids, I don't see a problem, I feel like it's being looked at as a problem, and I don't see a problem. I was told at one point that the fields are rented by these leagues, and we need to keep them nice for them, and I kind of took that tart and took issue with it. If Swim Florida or a league started paying to use our swimming pool, or an amazing swim school instructor or something, and then we show up and it's closed, and they say, well, we're, we're keeping it nice now for the people who pay for it. I would take issue to that, too. So I don't think, I, I think it needs to be nice for everybody, and the soccer leagues are great, and we care for them, and, you know, vice versa. I don't think it needs to be closed down. I don't think kids need to spend any more time indoors or on video games or anything, my kids are outdoor kids, that's all they do, and yes, they've been up here a bunch. It was a friend up here the other day with her son that was told June 17th will be closed. I'd like to propose other suggestions. I also am wondering why the fields always seem to be a target. I lived for nine years in Cypress Point, and I had to stop bringing, I know you guys have heard this many times, and it's a dead issue now, I had to stop bringing my kids to the basketball courts, it was an issue. It was never addressed, not one time did anybody stop by there and ask someone for a Gateway ID. I'm just going to tell you in my heart, I bet on most days you probably couldn't have found a Gateway resident among the people playing basketball there, the 20 or 30 that filled the parking lot, filled the basketball court. Yes, they were saying foul words all the time despite what you may have heard otherwise by one person who used to stop up there and say it wasn't the case and write up about it and stuff. It was the case. I had to confront him myself, he said, please stop, I have a bunch of little kids, and I had to stop using it. So nobody goes around the pool checking and saying, you can only bring one person with you, like my son was at the fields, and someone told him he can only bring one friend with him. So I don't know why the soccer fields are always like a target, but the pool, the basketball court, the playground, I don't think anyone would go to a mom at our main playground and ask her if she has any friends with her from outside of Gateway and tell her they have to leave. So I want it open for the summer, I want us to look into alternative options on ways to maintain it throughout the summer without shutting it down. I want the kids to be able to exercise and enjoy their community. When families like mine spend between $300,000 to $500,000 to live in Gateway, in all honesty, think about it. There's better school districts and stuff, I have three sons, in my opinion, there's better school, school zones. We're looking for that community field, and that's a very big part of it. So that's what draws a lot of people to here, so if you shut that down, you're taking a part of our community away. I know it doesn't matter to everybody, but it matters to some of us. And for home values and stuff, you've got, you're getting a new high school, you're, you're filled with schools in here, so you need to keep an eye out on your amenities that brings the families in the gateway. As far as, I do believe they should be for, how I said, no one checked the basketball courts when I lived at Cypress Point, and we had to stop using them. I do believe the amenities should be for Gateway residents. I don't think my son should be told he can only bring one person, but I think he should be there, and I think if there is no Gateway resident, so I don't know if you guys wanted to start an ID system or something for the children like Stony Brook has, I would be very happy to bring my boys up here, and you guys could print them something, and if they're going to play, you guys could stop up and say, is there a Gateway resident? And they could say, yep, and you could say, there's no problem here, it's Gateway kids using their amenity. So if there's none, then you can ask them to leave.
Are you almost finished?
I'm done, that's it, I just, I mean, I'm not going to stay for, I don't know if there's going to be a vote or how you guys do it, and I don't know when it got decided it was getting closed, but there's a lot of us opposed to it.
And, and I appreciate your coming and telling us that. Our maintenance, Mainscape does the maintenance on the fields in there, the ones that have told us that they really need to be shut down and allowed to rest. So that was where it came, that, that was when they could, they could fix them up and get them ready to be used again. Not necessarily by the leagues, but by everyone, but they get a lot of wear and tear, and they do need time to recover.
I don't think the 12 to 20 kids on them at a given time on that amount of space is what's going to cause them to not rest over the summer, in my personal opinion. Aerating them, which we don't do, we do travel soccer, I don't think we do, I've never seen plugs out there. When you go to the other fields in town, Jet Blue, Bay Shore Road, Soccer Complex, everything, they get aerated like twice a year to fluff up and, you know, they, the people go through. I've never seen that here, I've lived here 10 years, I've never seen the little plugs all around, they do it often. I don't think it's the, the few kids that are trampling on it in the summer, I think some seeds and Florida sunshine and rain is going to help a lot over the summer, and I, I understand they need to maintain, you know? But their employees that work for Mainscape, they don't have feelings in it. We do, you know, this is summer, my kids only get this certain amount of summers in their life, they want to ride their bikes up here and shoot the soccer ball and stuff, and there's certainly a lot worse things they could be doing, if anything, I think we would encourage the kids to give things up back.
Okay, then, you have a chance.
Two things. I believe it was a combination of staff and Mainscape that recommended it be sit-down. And I've dealt with this before on golf courses, and that is a typical deal to do. I was of the understanding that they were aerating, but they had been used small, what they call small tiny aeration instead of plugging it. Golf courses, you can't get away with that year-round, you've got to plug it. What I'm more concerned about what you said is the fact that there is a prohibition, I don't know by whom, because we certainly allow 40% of the leagues from coming in out of town. That's a public facility. I don't know that we can stop anybody from going on that soccer field, and I don't know anybody that has given anybody any direction to tell any Gateway resident, you can only have one. Out of, out of Gateway residence, that's, that's not the case. And at the fun park, I believe we've been told that same thing, that is a public facility, we can't prohibit people.
I won't get into any of the fun, but I'll let you know.
Fun park, we can prohibit it?
We can regulate and control access and charge user fees for not using. The fun part, yeah.
We, if we can do that in the fun park, then we're going to generate revenue.
No, in fact.
Because it's not Gateway residents using the fun park.
The region, we can say.
Thank you for not saying that, it's never been.
For the fun part, we can, we can limit the Gateway residents, no bond proceeds utilized, that's my note. As far as the soccer complex, we have the agreement with Lee County for the capital funds to utilize to construct it. We talked about allowing some access, but we can charge rate differentials.
And the pool, people out of town can not use it unless they are a guest of a resident?
We can regulate that also, same way, I don't think bond proceeds utilized, I think that one.
So what's the bottom line, you said the pool, people can go as a guest, so the same with the soccer fields?
I'm asking the question, if the pool was not used, public funds, we can keep anybody from not using the pool? I don't think you want to go down that road myself.
What we can do is charge a rate, for those who want to use a charging fee or a rate.
Guest fee.
Because those pop enters in Gateway, pay through our assessment for operation maintenance that.
But right now, we don't have the ability to do that, because if somebody comes in as, as a resident, use their key, and they bring in 15 people if they want, there's nobody there monitoring that.
Oh, there's people at the pool all the time that are not.
That creates an admin problem, that we now have to have a, some type of a security person over there monitoring people going in and out. But this deal here, nobody should be telling anybody that if their kids want to bring in kids from someplace else to play, we can't stop that.
It's happened, and my son, he's a good kid.
But is a staff person telling them that, or who's telling them that?
Mr. Shoemaker, would you like to?
Yes, would you like to talk, Mr. Shoemaker?
Well, we had that comment, because there were seven or eight kids playing soccer.
Six, with a dad, two dads.
And, well, I asked them if they were Gateway residents, and they said, no, they weren't Gateway residents. And I said, I'm not going to throw you out of here, but you guys have to pay if you're going to come out and play. And then she drove up and said, well, my son's going to play with this group.
No, he was already there, he's the one that called me and told me to come.
I thought he was in the car.
No, he was absolutely not in the car, he was on the field, and he called me and said.
We have a schedule of fees.
I can explain to you what happened. My son was playing, my son was playing soccer with, I believe it was three other buddies, and their two dads were here as well. And he called me, that's the only reason I told that, I was not.
My question is, do we have a schedule of fees for the dads?
And said the police were going to get called on him if he didn't leave right away, and so I called L, and I said, and I told him, you stay there, I'll be right there. You know, you live in Gateway, what in the world, this is a sunny whatever day afternoon, kids who have nothing but a water bottle and a soccer ball with them, are you kidding me? It's not 40 kids, I know we used to have men's leagues that used to come out here and use up our field, and that's totally not cool. This was just a few kids, you know? So when I got up here, I talked, and I did talk to Mr. Shoemaker, and I said, did you tell them you're going to call the police on them? And he did tell me, yes, he did, and I said, that's very scary to 13-year-olds, I should have my son film next time. That's why I drove up there, I called L on the way, and I said, what is going on, who is this? Is this a Gateway employee? Because I know L would have probably walkie-talkie them and say, that's, she knows us very well, that's a Gateway family, please, like, don't kick them off the fields. It wasn't a party of like 12 or 16 or 18 people, it was just a few kids on the middle field here shooting balls, that's it. And then we had a nice talk, and we settled it all down, I told the kids they could stay. I was told on the way up here, my son said, you said one, he can have one friend or something, and I said, so you and I did talk about how many? We had to talk about how many, and I said, that makes no sense, that he would have one friend, I said, when he comes up here, it's going to be five or six kids there, because they're shooting balls, they're playing against each other, you know? And besides safety in numbers, I don't think we have to worry about it being 20 or 30 kids, because they can't gather up that many friends at home.
I'm going to stop you, I understand your concern, I don't know what was going to happen with the fields being closed down because we've been told they need to be for maintenance, but we'll.
Maybe look into other options.
Other options.
Make signs around or something, they do it the whole summer.
I think it's six or eight leagues.
It just happens to be the whole summer, the last three years in a row, the entire summer, the kids get used to it.
Chris, do we have a per-person rate schedule?
The only time that we get into rates is if you do get like that men's league.
It's the leagues, that's what I thought.
Well, it's organized.
The next time my son wanted to meet his friends, I called and I spoke to Holly, L was out, I asked to rent a field, and nobody in all of here was able to find any information on how to rent a field for me, because I didn't want my son to get scared again. So I, they reserved it for me, and I picked up a paper, but the paper actually said pavilion rental, so I tried to follow the rules. I said, I know it's 25 bucks or whatever per field for an hour, I said, I will rent you and your buddies a field so that you don't get worried and kicked out. And Holly took over for L, L was gone, and Holly knows me as well, and she's like, Jesse, there's nothing up here, I don't, I don't even know what to do. So she gave me the pavilion rental, and I gave that to my son to show that he was allowed to be at the fields.
Thank you, I don't know what will happen with the fields.
Let's try to find other options, let's look into it, before we shut the door, so let's look into it. Okay. Okay, thank you.
And the last person, Avery Demming, Hampton Park, litoral issues.
Good afternoon, everyone, Avery from Hampton Park, and I've been working on litoral issues for six months now. I'm with Jim Brand, and in favor of the proposed DO that he has given you folks for consideration. But one question was asked a couple of weeks ago at a meeting or two, well, we don't even know what Hampton Park residents think about this removal of latorals. Well, we do know now, because I did a sample survey of our community. There's 400 and some homes that have lake views and are on lakes one through 10, which are the lakes under consideration. And I passed out 100 of these flyers, descriptions of the problem, description of litoral, education. Most people don't have an education on what a litoral even is. But of those 100, I spoke with, directly with 50 of those people, and that's 16% of these residents that I'm talking about of household. And 90% are in favor of latorals, just so you know. There is no question about it. And I had contact information at the bottom here, if they had a question or a problem, and only one resident that I know issued an email to the customer care and copied me on that, and it was negative. All the rest that I am aware of were positive to you folks. So there you have a sample of how the residents feel on latorals. I've also been to the county meetings previously, L and Chris were there, I believe, and so they know what the county feels about this. And you know, I don't know if you, you probably haven't heard this, but my one-on-one conversations with them are revealing, and I've spoken probably 20 times to 20 county, not called 20, but 20 times to these county officials, code enforcement, code enforcement supervisor, supervisor of the supervisor of code enforcement, naturalists on environmental. And anyway, what was approved, what was certified by the county in 2018, to approve the DO and all of that, the turnover, was, it's called an upgrade to what was on the specific 2004 DO. That is a word directly out of the mouth of supervisor of code enforcement. That was at that meeting, Chris didn't think, can recall, that was out of her mouth, upgrade. An upgrade approval does not necessarily need a DO to change the original 2004 DO. An upgrade that's considered minimal, reasonable, meets maybe new codes, is allowed. I have it right in the document, the county code enforcement allows that. We, Jim, is proposing a DO to cover for that minor change that allowed them to certify it in an upgrade fashion. Now, just a quick example of that, if you have a, building a house, and you're certified, and your DO for that house had some sort of standard gauge wire, electric, the code enforcement, they install this, they happen to, the contractor happens to have an upgraded wire in his truck, higher level wire, thicker gauge or whatever it is, he installs that thicker gauge wire. Is the county code enforcement going to reject that? Absolutely not, how silly. Is the county code enforcement going to require a DO to make, make a change on that? Absolutely not. So that's what's in the county code to allow that kind of upgrade and a change like that. So that's what we're asking for here, that's the way it's, it's been since turnover. I could comment on other things that the county has told me, but I'll keep it short.
Thank you. And just for the record, I wanted to point out that Mr. Bloom from Hampton Park arrived, probably about 10 minutes ago. Anyone else, Chris, just?
No, that's all the speakers we have. Mr. Banks isn't here, if you'd like to wait, you can go to staff reports.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. District Council, I'll start with you.
I apologize for not providing the written project, because it's been a kind of a crazy couple of weeks, I apologize. On today's agenda, we have the, hopefully the resolution of the Korean phase two permit, resolution will take that up at a later point in time. With regards to the FPL easement land, I'm still waiting for, you know, the confirmation I need about the parks, but maybe then, just keep pushing that along.
Are you waiting for that from Mr. Mann?
I have the letter, but it's not, it does not address what we need, it's, touches on the front. It's, touches on the fringe of what we need as far as insurance, but I'm not fully comfortable with that.
Okay.
Uh, with regards to the disclaimer for the RV facility, there's another possible way to have that achieved, but WCI signed that. I've sent a couple of call letters, Mr. Mann and David, and that's reading back yet. So I know, I think they have a lot on their plate elsewhere. I just had that comparison is usually pretty... David's good at getting back on other items, but I think Charles is very busy doing another volume of major projects. Uh, today I received, uh, provided a copy of a letter we received involving Hampton Park litorals. And so that if that gentleman makes a presentation, I would suggest that it not be a dialogue between the board and him on that, because it's, I'll call it, we're in almost pre-adversarial anticipation of adversarial proceedings because of threat of litigation contained in that correspondence. So, uh, if this gentleman or his attorney finds an approach as a board to discuss it, the board wants to listen to it politely, but I would not have any interchange or interaction on that.
So we all get a copy of that, uh, letter.
Sure, it's public record.
I mean, I, I just heard that before I came into the meeting, and I thought, how are we gonna take hearing of this late key? When do we get this notice violation?
It's not a notice violation.
No, it's not a notice violation. It's notes.
This man came in today, yesterday. I got it today, and it's, it's not one. It's just received today, from my perspective, and I think came in right yesterday. And a lot of other issues going on, uh, in working with staff on the budget assessment issue and all kinds of other various matters.
A quick question, predatory for Tony, uh, that we're gonna be talking about later on, and it just was probably, you know, that a lot of people in the audience may have come to ask questions. Where are our rules for assessment methodology?
We, we have been using, which one, the debt service or the own one?
Well, I read what we've been given, and I can't for the life of me save the seventy-thirty issue and the five-point-eight issue. I can't find anything that goes into anything else of what we're doing and how we're assessing people and the decisions we make. They look like they've just been pulled out of the air. Good examples, I look everywhere. Where does it say platted versus unplatted is a separate calculation?
Can we save that, this discussion for when we get into assessment methodology?
I'm just trying to find out where's the rules.
Well, once again, I, I think whether or not a formal rule has been adopted by the district in the calling of rulemaking process in chapter one ninety, I don't believe it's there, that the board can adopt their approach and methodology, which we've been using over the years, which I think that, when we have that discussion, I think it mirrors what we realize for the, uh, debt service allocation and calculation. And that's just a, that's an approach that the board has taken without the rule, but that's... And that's on a go-forward basis. I think that's why the board engage, for a go-forward basis engages services with your wire.
But the bottom line is, as I read it, this board has the authority to make any changes necessary, and there's no other, uh, steps that we have to go through other than... I didn't see any public meetings when the first ones were done. There were no public meetings. So I don't even see that a public meeting. We got all of our bridges in uproar last meeting about having public meetings. There's no need for a public meeting.
Yeah, the, the board is...
We, we didn't have one of the other rules, so anyway, we haven't had now.
If the board is going to change the methodology, change the assessment, change the approach, the statute requires, and let's go back in time, when the board first adopted the operation dimensions assessments way back once, it went through the one seventy, one ninety-seven process, which is the notice of public hearing and correspondence to the property owner, which at that time was one property owner, probably, or a couple of them.
The rules that have been done since, have they had a public meeting?
You don't need to unless you change, if you change the utilization of the money, if you have a brand new, you have an increase in the assessment, this is all on empties. The increase in the assessment, which was construed by a court as being a new assessment, you change the purpose for which the funds are utilized, you change the method of calculation. Uh, those are all factors, and then you need to go through the notice in the paper and the noticed individuals that dispute, but I think that's a process. Or Stephen, do you concur?
No, I would agree.
That's a process.
Yeah.
District manager, move to you.
Sure. I'm gonna ask Leslie to step up for a moment, please, just to give preliminary information on the survey of the downtown residents.
You're here doing the work.
Asking a number of questions.
Just wanted to give some of the totals from the survey results.
Thank you.
Leslie, Torvish, Tony, Boe.
She picks up well on the kids.
Uh, just wanted to provide some feedback on the survey so far of what's been submitted. We had a total of about four hundred and eighteen surveys that were returned. Um, majority of them were by mail, so two hundred and seventy-four surveys that we had to manually, um, put into data to compute responses. So we just wrapped that up. I anticipate that in the next meeting, I'll have the full report and attached in the agenda book. But, um, just to briefly, some of the highlights of the surveys, um, a hundred and forty-one were submitted online, two hundred and seventy-four were mailed, three were emailed. Um, so that's about nine percent, um, of the total surveys that were sent out. The next part kind of breaks down where those responses came from. Thirty percent were from Gateway Greens, um, all of their sub-assessations improved into that total, followed by Hampton Park, Stony Brook, and Daniels Preserve. Four of the top improvements, um, that the survey responses came back with were walking trail, a walking path, uh, security throughout the community, pickleball and bocce ball. And, um, location of these, of any amenity if we were to have the improvement were primarily at the Commons Pool area. Of the hundred and sixty-five responses, um, everyone else either did not indicate, did not provide, uh, a location. And, um, open questions, we had about a hundred and thirty-four, um, residents who, um, completed their concerns or suggestions, and the top four areas were, um, amenities related to parks and wrecks, enhancements, dog park concerns, um, experiences that we offered, public works, which was more driven to our traffic, um, safety on the roadways and speeding, customer satisfactions in general, and, uh, stormwater concerns, uh, which prevent, prevention drainage and flooding concerns. So that's just to brief somewhere.
Is it now closed, or do you continue to accept surveys of thinking?
Um, we didn't really have definitely a close date yet. If we were going to wait until we see following bill cycle, um, we're just gonna see how has, can we gotten that? See how many more responses come in the next week.
Sanibel, the next bill, you offer them a five percent reduction of the bill. There is five. I've done this before on surveys, unless you get thirty percent, it's worthless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, and I just, I just have a few, a few items I'll touch on. I gave you a copy of a report that we had WSP work on on our irrigation calculations and water use permitting. They finished that up. It was a sixty-five-hundred-dollar expenditure, and we'll be looking at some permanent modifications to our water use and our irrigation permitting that resulted in that. Uh, we just finished rehabilitation of the lift station down on Commonwealth and Gateway, which was a huge undertaking. And today we had the bypass pump delivered in the Stony Brook Master Lift Station, uh, which was installed, and that'll be piped up and tested in the next two weeks. And that was specifically for backup pumping capacity during hurricane or power outage. Big improvement to the utility system. I'll touch on soccer complex and the swimming pool. Uh, last week, we finished most of our twenty-nineteen rehabilitation work, and that included painting all the buildings of the soccer park, including the bathrooms and the pavilions. We installed a few picnic tables at the pool, and that finishes that end of the work. And, uh, Spidney, you'll be happy to know too, we hired a consultant to come out and evaluate our maintenance program in the soccer fields, and we'll have that report in the next week to ten days. And he's making recommendations on the maintenance and that period of closing, which truly is resting when you put the new sod in, letting it grow in. Uh, but they've come up with a few things too about repening the fields, so halfway through the season, we can switch the way the fields are running to reduce a lot of that high-traffic area. And I'll be happy to share that report with you. And we were looking at trying to keep a field or two open. Right now it's difficult because that deep time machine they use for the aeration is on such a tight schedule with all the buildings around the county, uh, that they said they couldn't leave a field open and then come back to allow us that rest time we need before the soccer season starts. So let me share that report with you.
Okay, awesome.
And I've got some good ideas just from talking to the people out in the field.
Yep.
And the only inconvenience with the, with the re-striping is the fellow that's been doing it for twenty years. Uh, but if we repent the fields, uh, and it's not a big expense, then he'll be able to switch those around.
Right, because your main wire is right in front of the soccer goals.
Right. And also working with the leagues to get them during practice to move the goals a little bit, because no one likes their kids playing in the ditch.
Yep.
So, yeah, we are moving forward with that item. Lake Bank restoration, the last, uh, last pond is being done over in Callaway Greens Drive. They're finishing up, um, installing the material, and next week they'll start putting stone in. That lake should be done in the next two to three weeks, and I'll complete our Lake Bank restoration program. Uh, storm drain cleaning is ongoing. The contractor should be finished up in the next two to three weeks with the budget allocation that we made. We also, the board allocated in addition a hundred thousand dollars to move back into Gateway Greens to finish that community. So as soon as he is done with the other communities on the list, they'll be moving back into Gateway Greens. Flowway conveyance cleaning, the board approved a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar contract, and they're out there right now working on the Stony Brook Canal, cleaning that out back to existing, maybe pre-permit conditions. So bringing it back to the depths and whips it was permitted and also the structure there. And, um, we're also lining that canal with the TRM material.
Chris, down both sides of the river, are you?
Yes, sir. That will be moving right across. And after they, after they finish the Stony Brook, really just priority, we'll be moving out to I-75 at Colonial to clean between those headwalls. And we, um, have access provided by Colonial. And I've also been talking to the folks at Botanica about access. And I'll be meeting with their board next week to talk about permitting and maintenance responsibilities from their C D D's aspect.
Has anybody from the state got back to us on the two four-by-eight box culverts?
No.
Cleaning those?
No. And, uh, that, that responsibility for the, for that is D B I, um, clean those culverts. But no, I haven't made any headway.
We get everything else cleaned, and that's a bottleneck. We haven't solved anything.
Well, our consultant told us the most important part was the, uh, the part on the west side of I-75, and we haven't made any headway on that.
Yes, sir, we have not, and we're working on getting the access easements, and then we'll, next year, move in over there and start doing some cleaning on that flowway.
I'm comfortable now that we have pushed from this show, we have the ability to access that.
Can we say that again, please?
I, I'm comfortable we have the ability to access it, and I think Lee County's indicated they would allow us to use their access rights. I think that's been expressed in the past.
Where's, where's Lee County's access rights?
They have a utility easement that's going through there for the power lines.
But it's on the west side of the fence, not east side.
Correct.
And you're right up against a wetland, so whoop-de-doo. It doesn't do anything for us. You get down there to that flowway, which is about eight hundred feet long, and that road that we have going across it, you get one wheel off the wrong way, you're gonna take a bath. And the other side, the other side is a wetland that you can't go in. So to work in there and do this, we're gonna pay a pretty penny to clean that out, because there's just no place to put the material unless trucks back up, starting at the end and back up. And then turn around and back up.
And I think the other difficulty is when I went out doing that field trip with L. and Mrs. Flaherty, was that there are other physical impediments. It's difficult. You've got FPL faults there. You have risers, you have risers from all the other utilities.
You gotta dodge them.
Yeah, so that poses a physical, I mean, you have the legal ability, but then you have the physical issue.
If you're driving a pickup truck, it's easy to get around it. If you're driving one of those great big fifteen-ton, uh, dumpsters, lots of luck.
Well, a lot to luck or not, we need to.
Do we need to do that, that's right.
And also, the last meeting, there were several action items that the board was addressing for Lake Eighty-three. Magnolia Lakes had some, uh, we've been running around with that. Where do we stand on the report from Petropetek for project, possible reprioritization? Danny provided a memo on June fourth with three options, um, that the board could take to address that for that Pond Eighty-three, and I think he'll bring that up during engineer's time. Uh, second, where do we stand with the possibility of having new community? Timber Creek discharged some of their stormwater to Pond Eighty-three. Uh, staff met with Zane Zeldin with Lennar to discuss the proposal. Zane put us in contact with Scott Edwards. He's the project manager for Lennar. Um, on the initial, his response was that the perm, ERP permits have already been issued for Timber Creek and, uh, that they weren't amenable to making any changes there, discharging water. However, we followed up with a written request, asked them to consider a modification to the permit, with Gateway willing to share the engineering and permitting costs to direct some of that water. Right now, all their water's going south and crossing the FPL wetlands into Worthington Commerce Area.
Flooding the FPL wetlands.
So we sent him, sent him a formal letter, and I asked him for a formal response until we look at the cost sharing. Uh, where do we stand with water quality treatments and litoral plantings? Uh, we requested three quotes for chemical treatments to the lake. We've received two of them. Aquagenics at eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty. The one-time application of Aqua Clear to reduce algae for six to eight months, and muck and dye treatments at fifteen a month. Uh, lake doctors came back with a proposal, and aquatic weed control came back. Well, they'll have one here tomorrow, says staff's gonna evaluate the three proposals and come back to the board at their next meeting with a recommendation for treatment of that pond. Second issue related to that was litoral plantings. So the DO had the four thousand and eighty plant requirement, seventy-eight trees. We got a quote from Aquatic Weed Control for ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars for those plantings, and a purchase order's been issued. And the planting will start on the trees in the next two to three weeks, and depending on the chemical method chosen, um, a couple of them, you can put the litorals in initially. A couple of them, you can't, and you have to wait a few weeks until after the initial treatment. But we'll get started on the, um, trees immediately. And last thing, we got, uh, in our own backyard, Thor Association of Special Districts is out at Sanibel next week, and, uh, some of the staff will be going to the technical sessions. And, uh, Division Economic Opportunity provided a grant for one of the registration fees for a staffer to attend. So, and Leslie will be going over there for half the day for some of the technical sessions related to her work. And that's all I have.
Question?
Yeah, uh, I talked to you earlier, uh, just to, uh, just to, earlier in the week. Uh, Arborwood Phase Three is full speed ahead, and they are reshaping and redoing, uh, the pond from the north end all the way to the south end, essentially filling in the pond so as to make a straight line. Uh, the filling in that they're doing has been compensated for by the new addition to the lake at the end with a great big valve on the end. But the issue is, they're in there, uh, your eyeballs sometimes play tricks with you when you're on the golf course, looking across the pond. But if that's a six-to-one slope, I have very clear C and I, doctor. Uh, the other one is, they're putting sod every square inch all the way to the control elevation. And there isn't one litoral to be found. Not one. That's our problem. That is our ponds. And, uh, we need to be checking the development order to see what it calls for on that. And if it doesn't call for litoral placement, white. White. But if we don't do something now, they're gonna be done with it. But it's sod all the way, brand-new sod all the way. We need to check the, the, the shape first. I'm more worried about the slope.
Sure, I'll get with the district engineer, get, get some inspection out on the field and check that against the D U.
And then the other one is, and I don't know if we're gonna talk about it when we get into the budget, but have, have we got somebody set up for the, the G I S mapping to start, uh, soon? And will it be the same one that they're using over at Pelican?
Uh, we have two items in the... Well, we have two items in the budget, one for the GIS mapping, um, through the general fund. And that is basically mimicking what's going on with Pelican. It's the same scope of work. It's just changing the location and the other.
Same firm.
Same firm. And the same budget item, same firm that we have with the enterprise fund to start GIS and digitizing and, excuse me, scanning all our maps and cataloging them so we can retrieve them and then GIS beta test on one subdivision. So both those items are included in the current budget.
All right, just one question. Are we making any progress on the bathometric business?
Uh, bathometric business? We put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget this year. We have, uh, putting together a hard proposal that we would go out and have an engineering firm do that work.
But we, we met with a firm last, last week, week before.
Right.
And gave them all the details, given the maps, gave them the deal and they, and they never responded back to you?
Uh, no, haven't heard back from them at the time. Pursuing that, pursuing that work through us.
That was disappointing.
And I'm pursuing that work through a couple of other firms that do that day in and day out that have that P E and B L S behind their names.
That we need. Anything else from Mr. Schumacher? District engineer.
I'm mixing it up there. Good afternoon. My name's Tyler Wayne. I'm with Tetra Tech. I'll be your district engineer tonight. We have, uh, four items on there. The very first one is a memorandum regarding an issue of Pelican Preserve that we've been working on for, oh, I guess since Hurricane Irma. Um, so I'll just give you the big picture here. This is regarding Pond Thirty-Eight Pelican. This is a lake that is next to a structure that flooded during Hurricane Irma. Since pretty much right after the storm, we've been working on that issue to see if something should be or could be done to make it not flood again. And, um, basically, there are several reasons why that happened to be the only residence in all of Gateway that at least I know flooded. But the main one is that, that that lake was just simply not designed to take that much water. Uh, so we've been working on various options to improve the conditions out there. None of them are really good options to proceed forward with, but the options that we do have are listed in this memo. Um, and basically what we can do is either, one, lower the lake control elevation to provide more storage. Uh, two, install an additional outflow pipe to move water out of the lake faster. Or three, burn off the lake from the homes and then install some additional piping to drain the yards and provide some valving to prevent that water from backing up into the yards. So, anyway, uh, those items are listed in here. And, um, that, that's a giant picture of what, what we've been doing with it. But those are the, the main points. And then I guess at this point, uh, we would be asking you to let us know if you would like us to...